I got my condom glass on. Can you see what it does say?
It's like.
It's afternoon. Okay. All right, now, she's off. Okay, awesome.
CK.
Yeah, all right. All right, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight to the regular town council meeting on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, 7:01. We're located at 24 Main Street, Gray Main, in the Town Council chamber. The city is looking for us. If you're joining through Teams, it's located on the website. And if you're calling in, it is 469-708-0487 with a meeting ID of 796-711-627. You know, this meeting tonight is going to be held in person and online with the link provided above. Residents wishing to participate in public comment or public hearing portion of the agenda may do so by clicking here to participate or calling using the phone number provided as detailed in the agenda. One of our councillors is calling in remote today. And so we're going to, I'll start with Charity. We're going to do a roll call. Charity, come here.
President.
President. All right, and Gaff?
Present.
Ken? And Vince?
Present.
And myself as well, Mike Johnson, present. So let's all stand up and do the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so. We're going to start tonight with the approval of the minutes from October 7th, 2025. Does anybody have any changes to make? Can I get a motion?
I'm going to be seconded.
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor? Approved. All right, I'm going to start with Council Communications and how they're going left to right. Why don't we start with you, Lynn?
Okay, sounds good. Thanks. So I'm the liaison to the Open Space Committee, and we have just lost two members. So we're pretty volunteers. The committee has accomplished a lot since it was first formed several years ago. And in the last two meetings, the committee has been discussing goals for the coming year and would like to pursue land conservation, working with local landowners and with the two Conservation Land Trusts that serve Gray, the Royal River Conservation Trust and Presom to get Regional Land Trust. Resiliency has been working hard on the Surface Water Protection Ordinance that will be presented to the council at a workshop in December. The council will vote on the Watership Management Plan this evening. It's on the agenda. One of the five priorities that Resiliency identified for the town through a long and involved community process a few years ago was emergency planning. So recently Chair Sandy Carter and I met with Chief Elkenich and then Julie Frelick from Bling in New Gloucester to discuss emergency planning across the two towns. A few things to highlight from that. Bling has been very active with, you know, developing programs for seniors. One of them is a matter of balance, which is a fall prevention program. It's a training, and they're looking for people interested in taking the class. You can sign up through the rec department. Bling has also organized a ride program for seniors that started in New Gloucester and has been extended to Gray. And they're looking for volunteer drivers, so if you're interested in that, you can reach out to Bling or contact me directly, and I can help you, you know, connect to them. There are a couple of emergency alert apps that can be downloaded to your phone. One is Code Red, another one is What Three Words. And so we discussed ways to let people know about it. And the chief is looking into policies that govern the use of those apps. Last thing there is that window dressers are something, another thing that Bling is working on. These are well-built plastic inserts that can be installed in homes for free to reduce heat loss. They have over 110 window inserts requested already. They're hoping to get to 200. And on January 16th in 2026, there'll be an event at the New Gloucester American Legion to assemble the inserts, looking for volunteers. It's kind of a theme for tonight. And so contact Bling or again, or me, and I can get you the details. And it'd be great to get that into a Gray newsletter if it's not already been posted. Just a quick activities. I have a meeting of the team working on the Libby Hill Road Public Safety Project. Quick reminder about that is that a few days, a few years ago, the council asked me to apply for a congressionally directed spending award to fund this project. And with the help of Senator Collins and Senator King, we received an award of around $830,000. This project is a top five priority in the 2018 Bike Ped Plan. Due to rising costs, the project is over budget, and the design team is doing right hand to scale back costs. However, this would bring critical safety improvements to the high school and middle school campus, including new sidewalks on Libby Hill Road, a second means of emergency ingress and egress to the campus, to the high school there, stormwater management and a new light, and new lighting by the middle school. And both the town and the school district committed resources to this project. I had a lot of correspondence because we haven't actually met since early October. I received several emails from a Meadowview resident regarding parking issues. They're attending a GP COG event November 5th with a main trust for local news called Journalism at the Crossroads. That was very enlightening. A couple of residents have contacted me regarding some maintenance needing on the path between Hancock Street and the plaza. This is used regularly by residents of the neighborhood and especially those living at Meadowview. And I'm so pleased and thankful to report that Tim Estes and his wonderful crew at Public Works went right ahead and repaired that. So kudos to them, and thanks so much for their hard work. Let's see, I had a request to modify any existing ordinances that relate to the removal of fallen leaves from residential and commercial landscapes because they are doing so in the fall. It's prejudicial to butterfly habitat. I'm just mentioning that in case you are thinking about raking your own lawns. And I had several complaints from a Meadowview resident regarding the name change of Hancock Street to Meadowview for that end of the street. And those residents will have to update their voter registration. Again, I'm just sort of mentioning this as a public service. I forwarded that to the town manager and the town clerk and asked if they sent a postcard to all residents affected by this change, advising them of the steps that they need to go through to change their registration. So thanks. That's pretty much it for me.
Thanks, Lynn. Charity, are you, do you have any updates or is there anything that you want to say?
I have nothing to report at this time.
All right, thank you.
Did you have Charity vote on the minutes?
She did, okay, yeah. Gotcha. Ken?
I don't have any committee meetings because we have CBA tomorrow and the Finance Committee is on Tuesday. But people have been reaching out about investor housing and Meadowview two and one and the parking problems. That's something that's going to have to be addressed sooner or later, and it's creating a huge problem. There've been, yeah, I mean, you always got the pitches in the fire department down there. So hopefully it's something Denise, I'm hoping, will check on when she gets in her position. That is a serious problem down there. I know there isn't a parking, something we need to look at.
Anything else?
No, I haven't had any committee meetings.
All right, all right, thank you.
On Thursday, October 9th, we had a planning board meeting, and the main topic was a Western Woods four lot division off Totten Road. And we're progressing forward with that at this point. And then on Monday, October 20th, we had a Board of Assessment Review meeting with a resident who is requesting a property tax abatement. We had a detailed discussion. I have to say, the group did a great job. We were there from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. And the final decision was going to be put forth on Monday, November 13th. Thursday, October 24th, we had an ordinance advisory committee to discuss the foster ordinance along with Resiliency Committee. Made some progress on that, still think we have some additional questions and conversations to have. But we did make some headway on that. On Saturday, November 8th, the planning board conducted a site walk for a proposed subdivision near 157 Egypt Road called the Sambrook subdivision, which is a nine lot division. That went well. And then on Thursday, November 13th, we had another planning board meeting. I had to leave a little early due to some other town commitments I had. On that, they did give the Western Woods subdivision the approval to move forward. Coal Farmers came forward with a site plan amendment and a pre-application. They're looking to add a restaurant with a drive-through at that location. And we had a tower company LLC, which is looking to erect a 150-foot wireless telecommunications tower on 67 North Raymond Road, which I believe was given approval. And lastly was the Durgan Woods subdivision, which is off Ramsdale Road, and it's a 51-phase lot division with 38 residential lots, 13 traditional lot subdivision. Lots of questions and lots of things we need to do on that. One of the big ones I can imagine is the traffic study, which is a major concern.
Good, thank you. And then for myself, let's see, yes. Kyle, can you work on that? Okay, all right, thank you. For Communications, I received a message regarding, and I just received it, so I haven't even responded yet, for the possibility of implementing a town more ordinance. And I know that is something that Anne and I have spoke about, and we are going to definitely look into that. And I've heard from multiple residents about the watershed protection that we are discussing tonight and voting on tonight. I see a lot of them here. And, you know, I did read everyone's emails. I have, I've been pretty busy over the last few days, but I did receive them all. I had discussions with the members of the GNG School Board regarding the petition on the cost sharing formula for committees. The only committee that I had, I attended the library committee. The previous vendor that we were using is no longer available, and we're now working with a new company. As a result, receiving materials has been a lot slower than in the past. The library continues to host a variety of events, including their recent Halloween activities, and they're expanding a lot of opportunities for community engagement. And I strongly recommend that you look at some of the things they're doing. They also have been supporting the local food pantry. And the information on how to contribute can be found on the library's webpage section. And that's it for committees. Let's see, the next is moving over to set up the petition. And so tonight, we're going to just briefly talk about the cost sharing formula that was brought and approved. The previous vendor that we were using is no longer available. That was brought and approved to be researched by the Council. They are researching it and they're developing, reviewing it and looking at the state of the situation. The community, you know, has spent a lot of time, they have a lot of that attention in the current, that it's a proper. Now, the decision on rules of service will be made by, at the December meeting. The council will also announce, she has some information regarding, you know, the application. We'll get that up, I'll post that tomorrow if you're interested in serving on the committee, and we'll get that posted. You know, I'm going to go over the information sent to me by the school board. But tomorrow night, there is a full-blown presentation, and, you know, they can answer your questions. All right, they know everything inside and out. And I, you know, will give you the information that I have. But if you have some detailed questions, I strongly recommend that you go tomorrow night. So what I know is that, is that the, because that the, everything was approved, we, there's going to be three pieces to this, right? So there's going to be a facilitator. That selection is going to be made by the superintendent, and it's a list from the state. They're going to vet the candidates, which they're already doing, starting process. And then they're going to contact with that facilitator. Then we need to do committee appointments. And there's going to be two from each town. They have to be registered voters, and we'll put all the criteria up and what, and what we're looking for. And then there's going to be a school board member from each one of the towns. There's going to be one from Gray, one from New Gloucester. And the, the town, each town decides who's going to be on it. And they're looking for people that are going to, you know, make the decision that makes sense for the council and community now. Let me talk a little bit about, you know, how it's going to work. The facilitator is going to present objective data, including historical and situational. They're going to facilitate processes in groups, and they're going to get feedback. They're going to develop a proposal for the committee to consider, and they're going to develop the reports. The committee members are going to attend the meeting, ask questions, discuss issues. They're going to vote on the proposal, and it's going to be ruled by the majority, and I'll get into more of that in a minute. The present recommendation to the public, they're going to present the recommendations to the public if there is a proposal to make at all. The district is contracting and paying for the facilitator. They're going to provide the meeting space. They're going to provide data and information after the process of the facilitator, and then they're going to support the community, community participation at the process of the facilitator. And then they're going to initiate the referendum if it, if it is required, all right? Now, there's going to be some specifics that will be determined during the meetings by the facilitator. But generally, it can be expected that there will be at least two to three meetings of a few hours in the evening. Meetings are open to the public, but there is no public comment or participation. Facilitators may recognize the superintendent or other district staff to answer specific questions at meetings or request support in writing to the meeting. The facilitator and the committee may ask for public input during the process in the form of a survey or a place to submit questions and answers. So this is how I understand the committee vote. If the majority of the committee vote is in favor of no change to the cost sharing formula, the process is done. Okay? So if there's six people and four vote not to change it, it's done. Nothing else. If the majority of the committee vote in favor of a new cost sharing formula, this is where I think people need to go to the meeting, get more clear definitions. It potentially moves to a public meeting and a referendum, all right? And I tried to get as much information as I could to make sure I understood what that means. And I don't feel comfortable telling you something that I don't fully understand myself. If the committee cannot reach a majority vote, a third party must be selected to prepare a written summary. If partial recommendation, to present that recommendation to the committee. The committee must then solicit public input on that recommendation. The board votes to approve the warrant articles for the referendum, and, you know, it should be May business, meeting in June vote. The district meeting on proposed change to cost sharing formulas, committee voting, team present, and public comment. A ballot vote, majority of voters in the district in favor of approving the vote, and board serves a ballot to ballot vote. Now, all I'm going to say is that I was and I still am under the impression that if the majority vote in favor of the cost sharing formula, it's done. But I still need to do some more digging to make sure that we understand that. And that's the information that I've been given. You know, we will get the information out, allowed to involve if you want to. And we will be looking at, you know, getting a couple of people from, on that board then. New Gloucester is doing the same thing. I talked to them today. They presented this information last night. And the, I think tomorrow, like I said, GNG MSAD 15 is presenting this information, discussing it. So that is how that works. Next, I am going to move over to the, let's see.
When's our, is our next meeting December 2nd?
Yeah.
Okay, so my question is, if we give this information to Kyle and he posts it, is that enough ti, I mean, is it enough time because today is, you know, do we do the end of next week, or do, or do we have a separate meeting? I mean, what are your thoughts, Anne? Do we have a separate meeting, like on the 9th to pick people? Is that enough time to put it out?
I think it's.
Let people fill out an application?
Yeah.
Do you want to go, all right, so you want to say have it in by, what, the 27th?
Yeah, we just need a few days to look at it, and we're going to discuss it openly in the meeting. All right, and, you know, so.
So is the, is the, what do you think, the 27th, if you look at the calendar?
Yeah.
That would be next Thursday. What are your thoughts?
Thanksgiving, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, not happening.
Hey, I work all the time.
While you're sitting around, I mean, I'm fine with that.
I mean, do you want to say the 26th? Yeah, when I say the 26th, I think New Gloucester's is the.
Well, we'll put all the information on the website.
Yeah, I'd like to, by the 24th, I think, would be plenty of time. And then, you know, we, there would be time to, for us to, you know, decide how we're going to decide. I think there should be some discussion of that upfront, like what the process would be.
Okay, absolutely. So I'll get that over to Kyle, and we'll get that posted, so keep your eyes open for that.
All right.
Thank you.
No problem. So next, we're going to do to public comment of non-agenda items. The public is invited to address the council on any item of business not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. You know, citizens have the right and are encouraged to speak during public comment regarding items on the agenda or regarding an item at the time which is, does appear on the agenda prior to the council beginning its deliberation. All comments and questions during public comment or on the agenda item are limited to not more than three minutes. Anyone in attendance, in person or remotely, who wishes to speak will have the opportunity to speak once. The chair may allow any person who has already addressed the council during public comment on the agenda item or during a public hearing to speak again, but only to clarify a point or share a new and previously unheard point of view. This is not intended as a time for debate. The chair will close the public comment as soon as no new information is being presented. And additional comments are welcome at the separate, uh, the second public comment period of the agenda. If you need to call in, the phone number is 469-708-0487, and that meeting ID is 711-796-711-627. Now, before anybody gets up, I just want to say a couple more things. Tonight's agenda includes some very, you know, several sensitive items. And we want to begin by just asking everyone to take a moment to reset. Our employees need to know that the board supports them and has their back. With that said, we also have the responsibility to address situations where rumors, innuendos are being spread online. Many of the comments circulating amount to harassment and defamation of character. We encourage residents to support our employees and allow them to take the steps they need to protect themselves. The needs of our citizens remain extremely important. As we move through this transition period, which I'm saying a little bit earlier, we will be carefully evaluating the needs of both the community and our employees. We have committed to reviewing items such as PERS, employee recognition, and flexible scheduling while ensuring to continue to meet the needs of the town. During this time, we will work to ensure there's a clear understanding of the roles and responsibilities of everyone involved. And the expectation is that when people get up tonight, they're respectful. And there is a lot of emotion, and I understand that. But, you know, we also have to be respectful at the same time. So we welcome it open to the first person that wants to get up. Thank you, Sue.
You covered about everything I was going to say, but that's okay.
Thanks, Sue.
My name is Susan Fuller, and I live on Yarmouth Road. This evening, I'd like to share with the residents of Gray that we have successfully collected enough signatures to initiate a review of the current cost sharing formula for our school district, MSAD 15, which serves both Gray and New Gloucester. At the November 5th school board meeting, the board formally accepted the signatures and has since issued the required 15-day notice to each municipality. I would like to extend my sincere thanks to Ken Harrington and to Vincent Pelangi for attending that meeting. Your support was truly appreciated and did not go unnoticed. Thank you. The next step of this process is for the Gray Town Council and the New Gloucesters Select Board to choose two at-large representatives to serve on the Cost Sharing Review Committee. In addition, the school board will appoint one board member from Gray and one from New Gloucester. The district is also required to engage a facilitator selected from the list maintained by the Commissioner of the Department of Education in Augusta. Once these pieces are in place, the committee will begin meeting to evaluate and consider options for funding the local share of our schools. Finally, I would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to all the petitioners. Helped with this significant undertaking.
Hang on. There's a sound not coming from, from that mic?
No, I, I got the same message, so just keep going, and then we'll fix that. Sorry, Sue, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Finally, I want to extend a heartfelt thanks to all our petitioners who helped with this significant undertaking. We collected over 800 signatures in about five-ish weeks, and I'm grateful to everyone who supported this effort. Respectfully submitted, Sue Fuller.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you.
Kyle, can you, we've got residents texting us saying that they can't hear anything online.
Well, they said that they could see her, but they couldn't hear anything she said.
And then I was texted, they can't hear anything we're saying too, so. I don't know. Let me ask. All right, I'll find out. Let's just keep going, though. Thank you, Sue, for stepping up. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Hello, Judy Semino, Arlington Core. Is the microphone on, or, will we go? Okay, so I just wanted to talk on two things. First one was, is I wanted to say, welcome, Randy and Martha. It was great to see you guys back, so. I'm sure you're excited for tonight, so I wanted to say, well, you know, good time coming, so. All right, so thank you for the new town councils on getting some stuff done, especially with the resignation. I think it's very exciting. I know some people are not on the same page as us, but I do think it's a great turning point for Gray, and I want to say thank you for your hard work on that. The other thing I wanted to talk about real quickly was a cost sharing agreement. There is a process for that, and it is supposed to be voted at large. And I know that I have spoken with you, Mike, and you said that those, those folks have already been chosen, and it's not the way the process is supposed to go, so we need to make sure that.
I missed the, because I can't interrupt. I have not said that it's been chosen, so don't miss. Thank you.
I was going to note that the town manager's agreement there is on the agenda, so that is not an eligible item to be discussed on the citizens' comments.
Just inappropriate.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm just wanted to say that I really would appreciate the process to be taken, the way it's supposed to be designed, and that, that the, the committee to be chosen at large, the way it's supposed to be addressed, and not behind closed doors, and so that everybody gets a chance to put their applications in and be chosen appropriately. So I just wanted to say thank you, guys, for your time. Appreciate it.
Would anybody else like to step up? Yes, please, yep.
Hi, my name is Jess Palladino. I'm a resident here, and I live on Crystal Lake. So first, I just want to say I'm very impressed that you mentioned my email already. I figured that nobody would be reading it until at least tomorrow at the earliest, so thank you. So right now, in the town, anyone at any time can place a permanent mooring on any body of water, wherever they want. There's no guidelines, there's no consequences in terms of if they're doing it, you know, in an unsafe area or where the loons are nesting, right in front of somebody's dock, et cetera. This has been a problem on Crystal Lake and other main lakes. It adds to pollution, it adds to just conflict among residents, many, many different things. So I'm just here today to ask for it to be considered and prioritized in the upcoming year. I know proposals have been presented in the past for potential ordinances. And so I would love for the town to prioritize that. I know there's a lot going on. But with all of the growth, I'm very concerned that this is going to, could really become a very much bigger problem with all of the new development going on and with the town beach right at Crystal Lake. So this also doesn't just affect Crystal Lake, obviously Forest Lake, Little Sebago, other places like that. We have started circulating a petition that the Crystal Lake Association put together this summer. I haven't promoted it much, but we already have 100 signatures. So if anybody's interested in that, please reach out, and would love for you guys to review and take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to get up? Yes.
Derek Shirley, in the flesh. Campbell Shore Road. I'm actually making this really sweet. I wasn't here for my reappointment. I just want to thank you guys for the reappointments. I'm a working man. I usually work 10 hours a day. The only reason why I'm here is because my son decided to sleep by grandma's. So I. I decided to snuck up here. So I just want to say thank you for the reappointment. I might have some two cents later on some other stuff, but that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for stepping up.
Rick Light has his hand up online.
Oh, that's all right. This person in the back, raise your hand if you want to come up and then we've got somebody online. Yep, come on up. Yep, yep. Yep, you. I couldn't see from the who raised the hand, so.
Remon Row at 100. Well, the state troopers and all went by today. Zoom, 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 zoom. Anyway, so first of all, I wanted to make a suggestion for the future. We are looking to, you know, look for a new town manager. And in the past, we have created committees create with town employees, I mean with citizens. And we've done it, I think, twice since I've lived in this town. And based on the experience, I'm sorry, some of the experience of the last two managers, I think that it's time to initiate that type of someone's, it keeps on clicking. I apologize. I'll do it this way. So, so I think that it'd be beneficial for the town to be able to form this committee. I'd like to suggest that the membership would consist of maybe a member that's been here for a while, a member's here for, you know, you know, a short time, you know, get a variety of people that would have be able to have input and getting a more well-rounded person for this community and in the helping of the town council. It's hard to give up power, I know, when you're, you know, sitting as councillors and all. This is not a reflection on the current councils, but keep in mind what we went through for the last two and and the council did it on their own. So, so that's my suggestion. Hope you'll consider it. And I am going to give testimony. I'm sorry, but I did hear and it's been, it was told to me to my face that people had been selected for that committee and that, you know, it's all done in the, it's already in the bag. So that that was poor service. Tonight's a complete reversal of what's happened and it was very confusing for the last few weeks to hear these rumors. And I'm not the only person. Other people heard the same thing. So I think, you know, policy should be made and watch what you say to the public so that we don't have this kind of misrepresentation and you're interested in not having misrepresentation. So thank you.
We have one person online. Can can you hear us? RL?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you turn it up?
Thank you, members of the, Chairman Johnson, members of the council.
Rick, we're going to turn it up a little bit.
Turn you up. Okay.
All right, try speaking again.
Test 123. How does that sound?
We'll take it.
I can turn my volume up a little bit too. How's that?
Better.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I, Rick Light from 35 France Circle. I don't know if it's appropriate this time to talk or to wait for the motion. I wanted to put a kudos in to the town manager. I know, I understand there's going to be a resignation motion put forward tonight. And I just wanted to put forward a thank you for all his hard work and his vision and his thoughtfulness.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yeah.
I really would prefer if you wait till the end to do this because we haven't done anything yet and it's really out.
Okay, all right. Wait for that item to come up. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I'll wait for that turn. Yep.
Is there anything else or do you just want to talk about that? Because we haven't voted on it yet.
While I've got it, something is just kind of a small thing, but small thing, but a big thing. It's just been on my mind for a while and I never think about it. But since I'm here, is there a reason why the crosswalk at the corner of, it's kind of the corner of Brown 115 in Hancock, and I call it at the at the tip of the bow of the ship at the at the church there, we've got a crosswalk without any hand, any, what we call WB 11 signs, the crosswalk signs. And that is a, that's probably one of the worst intersections in this part of the state for a number of reasons. And that intersection, when you use that crosswalk, people are just flying. I know there's, we're trying to get it down to 30 and I wish people would go 30, but is there a way we could get legitimate crosswalk signs on that crosswalk? It's a really dangerous crosswalk and just having a striping doesn't make it legitimate. So to have those signs would certainly be helpful. Just something to think about. If that could be moved forward, that would be terrific. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, you bet.
Would anybody else like to?
Pam Edson, 95 Yarmouth Road. I just also want to reiterate that we have worked really hard to get the petitions to, we've been at the dump, we've been at the post office, we had the transfer station. It was a stifling hot day. It was horrible and nobody wants to see you coming out with a petition and you're going to beg. And people have been so gracious and people want this. I'm just saying, you know, and what we have, what we have presented to them on this petition was that we want it to be the MSAD breakout is by pupil, that each town pays for their kids. And I want to also reiterate, because I watched the New Gloucester Town Meeting last night and I found it very informative that while I was watching that their their acting chair last night mentioned that the Gray, the Gray Town Council had already picked two councillors to serve on this committee. So it isn't just people, three people here that heard it. I heard it last night announced from the, from, from their dais. So I just want to.
Pam, I'm just going to stop you. Okay. I am not going to allow people to get up and spread lies without documentation.
Well, that's on video.
If they said that, I will talk to them because nobody has voted on it. It hasn't been done yet. Cut it out.
No, now listen to me.
Yeah, no.
I'm telling you what I saw on the video last night.
I understand, but it's not true. I've already, I've already, I've already done it and I'm, I'm, no. I'm allowed to do this.
I'm going to talk because it was on a video.
Oh, okay. But I'm telling you, it wasn't true. Okay. And all you're doing up here is causing more issues.
There's no more debate. I mean, this is not about debate. She can say whatever she wants to.
Okay, I just want to. I just want to say that I don't want this screwed up. You know, this is our one opportunity to do this. And I think it's really important that it's done in the most transparent way and definitely in the public forum. And that's what I want to say and I just appreciate it. And I just want to say too, that if I had to pick who I would want to represent me, the two girls that have worked tirelessly to put this before us all would be my choice because they're the ones that have had their head in the game. They've done the hard work. They've done the research and they're focused and I trust them to get the job done.
Is there any else that would like to get up? All right. So moving on. So we need to do an adjustment to the agenda. So Andrew Chadbourne will be relocating out of Gray and is asked to withdraw his application. So I need a motion to take out of order 2526-12, 2526-13, resolve 256-20, and to remove 2526-17, appointing Andrew Chadbourne to the planning board. Do I have a motion?
You do.
Do I have a second? All right. All in favor? Charity, can we get your vote on that?
I'm in favor.
Okay, approved. So let's see. We are going to go to, what we're changing is this. We are going to go right to the authorization and the separation agreement between the town of Gray and Michael Foley. The authorization and separation agreement between the town of Gray and Michael Foley. Be ordered that the Gray Town Council hereby approves an agreement entitled Mutual Agreement Release between the Town of Gray and Michael Foley and hereby authorizes the town council chair to execute the same on behalf of the town. This is the first and final reading, November 18th, 2025. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm just going to go, Charity, are you, can you vote, please?
Is there any discussion?
Oh, is there any, does anybody have any discussion? Okay. Charity, would you like to vote?
I'll vote to approve.
Vote to approve. Ann?
No.
Pam?
Yes.
Vince?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that's passed. Next, we're going to the appointment of Denise Clavett as interim town manager and be ordered that the Gray Town Council pursuant to Article 3, Section 4 of the Town Charter does hereby appoint Denise Clavett as interim town manager with compensation to be fixed at the rate of $120,000. This is contingent upon the bond being given by the appointee to the town of Gray where the premiums of bond be paid by the town. This is the first and final reading, November 18th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Do I have a second? All right. Are there any questions?
Discussion? I mean, I'm just, I'm sort of not happy with how this all came about. So I think I'm going to vote no on this, although I have the highest regard for Denise and and her talents and and I, so it's sort of a protest vote, I guess.
Anyone else? Let's move it to a vote. Charity.
Vote to pass.
Ann?
No.
Tim?
Yes.
Vince?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So all right. So we're going to go to the approval of the fee schedule. So be ordered that the Gray Town Council approves the fiscal year 2026 master fee schedule as presented. And, you know, let's open it up and then we're going to have someone speak. So do we have a motion? Second? And Britt, can you come up and kind of talk about this a little bit, please?
Point of order. She didn't speak sitting up in front now or?
No.
All right. So we're talking about order 252610. So we have revised the FY26 master fee schedule. In there, I've provided a memo covering the background rationale, key points, and our next steps. The main reason we are doing this is because the last time our fee schedule was reviewed and approved by town council was for FY 2023. And obviously, fees have changed. So for us to be able to charge accordingly for services rendered, we need to update our fees. This does mean that we can charge these fees correctly, but should we go through the revision process, especially since we're adding the ad hoc committee for the transfer station, if any of those fees do change, we can change them and amend them with a council order at that time. So just because we are making this and approving it tonight does not mean it's set in stone for the rest of FY 2026, should we decide something else needs to change. The formatting is changing because we are going through the codification process with general code. So this is going to align with what the general code format looks like. When that is all done and approved, on the left-hand side of the new schedule, it will list the codes that it's associated with. I did not add those codes at this time because when we go through this codification process, our codes, chapters, and everything are going to be changing as well. So rather than making several changes now and then again in a few months, opted to leave it blank and provide you with one clean copy then. So any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
So these fees, they increased. Are these the old fees from 2020?
Most of these are, have remained the same.
Okay.
Most of them. There's a few that have changed and those are generally when it comes to the code and planning departments for things that they've had and our fire rescue.
So. Yes, those are the ones that I'd like to talk about a little bit. They're really steep.
Yes. So that is what it is set at for through the state and what doesn't mean that we are, this is what we are billing our residents. This gives us the ability to bill the insurance companies.
Okay, well.
I can't, I wish I could speak more clearly on that. That's not my area of expertise.
Okay, that's the only questions I had asked about that. And the transfer station, I already talked to you about that.
Yep.
So those fees, I know you said you made a screw up on one of them. Was it?
Yeah, my line item went up one, but I fixed it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that when we get the committee.
Yep.
All right, that's all I have for questions.
So originally, I was going to say, can we put this on the December 2nd to readjust the fees, but it sounds like it makes more sense just to how do you do it when you do the committees? Okay, cool. Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wondered, you know, for the planning ones, if you could just talk about or for the changes that are made to any of these, I guess, sort of how, what went into that? And I understand that you may have been relying on other department heads for those. So yeah, you may not have the answers, but I just wanted to check and see if you could enlighten us.
When it came to Planning Board Staff Review Committee, that went through Kristen. She had reviewed that with our third party. Why can't, Tammy, do you know who I'm talking about? Thank you.
Yeah, most of the, excuse me, most of the planning board fees that went up are basically escrow fees. So a lot of those go back. It's money that's held for engineering review and we don't set those fees. We're charged by Gora Palmer. So if somebody gives us a $5,000 deposit and we only use $1,000 of it, at the end of the project, that $4,000 goes back to the developer. So it's not something that we collect and keep the entire amount, but basically based on what Gora Palmer's billing us.
Yeah.
We have to make sure that we don't run out of money.
Okay.
So that's pretty much was the intent of behind a lot of the planning board increases.
That's cool. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Is that it?
Any other questions? Charity?
I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Because you're online, Charity, I'll start with you. But I guess, is there anybody in public that would like to make a comment, has any questions? Okay. Charity, I'll start with you.
I'll, I'll vote to pass.
Pass. Ann?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Vince?
Yes.
And Kim?
Yeah.
All right, let's see. The next one going to, all right. Let me see. One, two. Okay. Repeal, replace the Gray Town Council's social media policy. We're going to repeal and replace the Town of Gray's social media policy. Be ordained that the Gray Town Council approves the repeal and replacement of Gray Town communication and social media policy as recommended by the communications IT director and the town clerk. This is the first and final reading, November, November 18th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, let's open it up. If you have any questions.
Is Kyle here? You want to come up for a sec? Thank you. A couple of things and they're just grammatical on the sections, unless I read it wrong or numbered wrong. So like there's no numeral, no Roman numeral four, but there are two fives.
Okay.
And then there's no numeral eight, but there's a nine and a 10. So easy fix. My question is, under section nine, it's like number two, it just says, I'm just curious, when will the employees sign the acknowledgement? Like, how does that go?
Unless Britt has a better answer than I do, I would imagine it would be either when the policy goes into effect or even if we have every employee here during training day, we can get people to do that then.
So what's, yeah, question. So training day, what's that like? Just like a review of what the?
Come Training Day, which happens every summer. That's a good chance for all the. Come Training Day, which happens every summer, that's a good chance for all the employees to be in this very room, and then we can get them to sign and inform them what the policy is, and then get them to sign it.
Cool. And you can just give us just a rough overview of, I can't remember the reason, but let everybody know the reason why we're doing this.
Sure, for the employee section specifically?
Well, no, just for the, for the change of the policy.
Oh, sure.
Sure. Thank you.
12 years is a long time to go for any policy to not be updated, and so in the digital age, 12 years is an eternity. So the social media policy really need some tender loving care, and we updated it with quite a few things, not the least of which includes the various technological enhancements that have sprung up over the last decade. One note, I think most notably in there also includes the use of AI. We can do that. We can do that responsibly and ethically, and this policy allows for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question on page 42, 5B. Under, under what circumstances would you not disclose that content was AI-generated? I'm just trying to understand. I think disclosure is important.
Absolutely, yes. Transparency is key. There are, there is a scale on how severely you can use AI in certain things. If it's something that, like, if I were to create an entire Facebook post using AI, that would certainly qualify for the transparent disclaimer. If I used AI to perhaps guide the creation of like, half of a sentence, that might be not quite worth the space it would take up.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. I mean, I do, I am concerned because as, you know, we're heading towards a period where, like, videos can be generated through AI that, that depict anybody doing anything
Yes.
very realistically. And so I think this is an important, I'm just, I'm so thankful that you and the staff just have, have taken this on and have updated this policy. It's long overdue. I think we really should be revisiting it annually at this point.
Yeah.
Because things are moving so fast. And I, I've been very unhappy at the online content posted by some town employees and members of the community, and I just, I think this is an important step towards improving the tone of the, the public discourse. And so again, thank you so much for taking this on.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And then on six, on the employee guidelines for social media sites. Number one, you know, I think that this needs to be very clear, that we are not gonna tolerate any harassment of our employees online. We're, you're gonna get that information, and we're gonna collect it, and we're gonna hand it over to our attorney as soon as possible, and we're gonna help do what we need to do. Okay? Because there's been way too much information that is false, that is certainly, not only it's harassing, and it's hurting people's reputation and, and defamation. And we're starting today. Okay? I want the employees to know that. We take this very seriously, and we're gonna stop. Okay? And I appreciate you updating this. This was very well needed.
Agreed. Thank you.
Good job. Anyone else? All right, I'll start with you, Anne.
Okay, so we're going to the Watershed Management?
Oh, no, no, we gotta vote on this. Yeah, we gotta vote on this first.
I had an agenda.
Oh, first, oh, wait, is there a public comment? I'm sorry. Yeah, go on.
So my name is Derek Shirley. I also have a synonym called getting high with cats. It's a great synonym, I know. It reaches approximately half a million people every 30 days. So I do make money off of social media. I am a volunteer for this town. One thing I won't, you know, stand for is nitpicking people's right to free speech. And I agree, as someone that goes to the State House and regularly pushes, puts pressure on our state reps and senators, regularly, I know there's a fine line between harassment and free speech. But let's not get blurry on these lines, okay? That's just my biggest concern. Because someone like me, I have a lot of opinions that I shout, and I have about a half a million people that agree. So do I have to be punished for that? And that's rhetorical, I'm not like, you know, I got you guys, to be clear. So, you know, I think, you know, we gotta think long and hard, you know? Some people like, yeah, this is serious, and I, and I respect that in every aspect of the word, but social media is a place to express and invent, and, and where the average person can come and talk and express their dislikes about their local governments. And I might dislike what is being said. Heck, I get stuff thrown at me all the time in my industry because of my opinions, especially recently. So my point of the matter is, just please don't lose that. Don't let your feelings run policy. At the end of the day, again, I love Kyle, I think it's great policy for the most part, but let's not get blurry, and let people speak their minds, and let's not be scared to let people speak their minds. Definitely online. If they have the balls to come up here and say something to your face, you should, a public service member should be able to take it. Point blank, period. But yeah, I really feel that, you know, definitely people that don't know what it's like to run a social media with half a million views a month with only, you know, they don't, people have no idea what that's like. So to have right policy based off that, probably generated by AI, which is not a slide to Kyle, but, you know, let's ask people maybe in our town that actually runs social medias, and, you know, that actually knows how to push the boundaries, and see what's maybe a course of education to our public of what's proper, maybe, let's call it proper pressure, and not proper pressure, right? So I think it'd be like anything else, I'm education before regulation. So that's all I have here today. I won't chat up anymore. Thank you.
And I just wanna make a point of clarification real quick. You know, I think the point of this is not to stop anybody from speaking their mind.
Right.
The point of it is to stop lies that can't be backed up when someone is harassing somebody and defaming their name. That's what we're talking about. Nobody wants ever meant, and I, I'm 100% sure that Kyle did not mean that we want to, you know, if somebody says something about me, which they all do, it is what it is. Okay? But when they come up and say blatant lies that they can't back up.
And that's when it becomes a civil matter.
Then, then that's a different matter.
That's a civil matter, not a, not a government matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle, yes?
Just an important point of clarification. In the policy, there is a section that says that this policy allows the ability for users to comment on the town's social media policies and may be enabled, modified, restricted, or disabled at any time. So we're not in the policy saying that comments have to be off, we're just giving the option that they can be turned off.
Pursuant to council resolve.
This is just for the Town of Gray website, right?
Social media.
Social media altogether.
Facebook Cage, Instagram, YouTube.
Town of Gray.
Yes.
Not created, lost, or uncensored.
No.
No, no, no.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Randy, please.
I'm not a resident, so I.
You can go up. You, you just gotta go up, Randy, that's fine. You don't have to be, but you do need to go up, please.
Well, thank you. All right, so Randy Cookson, I served 24 and a half years with the Town of Gray. I am not a resident. However, our previous apparent town manager slandered me while we're speaking of things of this nature. The letter that he kept posted for a year and a half on the website, I never wrote. I signed it under coercion. It was, my wife is a transplant recipient who needs medical care. I did not want to jeopardize my health insurance with the town. So I signed that letter. And Ms. Gass posted online that I wrote that letter. And it's not true. I did not write that letter. I signed it because I had to, to take care of my family because I was threatened. That's.
Thank you, Andy.
And that's.
So Judy Semenow, so, well, I was just up a few minutes ago. I know that you thought that I was lying about our conversation, about you and I had a conversation about who was chosen for house hearing, and you advised me that you had already been chosen in charity. And so you told me that, and so I am not lying about that. That is actually what you told me that day. So I'm not gonna sit up here and say that I'm a liar when it came from you, so I'm just protecting my rights.
Yep, no, same, same with me, and all I'm gonna say, Anne would have a point of clarification. I would like the proof, if I'm gonna be accused of it, and I will, we are gonna be talking to somebody about this, because if you're gonna accuse me or anybody else of something, you need proof. Okay? Prove it.
All right, we're not supposed to be.
We're not supposed to talk back, guys.
Well, I can do a point of clarification, and I'm doing that, okay? And I'm not.
We're not gonna get into a debate, though.
Not gonna be slandered. All right. Anyone else?
Tracy Greenwood, Divot Drive. I just want to make a comment, and Randy, thank you for being brave in getting up there and speaking the truth. Thank you. Also, I just wanted to say, and this doesn't go for all the Town Council members, but really, I think that body language is really important, or the lack thereof. So maybe some of the Town Council members should really check themselves to make sure that they're providing and presenting in a professional manner. Thank you.
So what, what I need to know is, who is in charge of making those determinations with the postings? Will it be the town manager? Would it be the Town Council? Would it be, what's his name?
Kyle.
Kyle, thank you. What's his name? Sorry. I mean, so I think that we should know who would be turning the switch off, and who, what criteria they're gonna use in order to make that switch turn off. So I think the public would be more comfortable having that kind of information. Thank you.
Kyle, you wanna get up?
Yeah, is that something?
Yeah.
Kyle, can you?
Thank you, Karen.
If directed to do so, I could just blanket turn off all comments.
So you're gonna be in charge of it?
So, so, if, can I hold on? If you guys look at the next resolve, we're gonna get to that in a minute. Okay? All right. Is there any more questions? Or anyone else wanna comment? Can we have a vote? Charity?
Vote to pass.
Tim?
Yes.
Vince?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. All right. So we did move a couple things around. So next, we're gonna go to Resolve 2526-20, the acceptance of the Watershed Management Plan. And, let's see here. So the Watershed Management Plan is gonna be resolved that the Great Town Council hereby accepts the Watershed Management Plan as recommended by the Resiliency Committee, and to hold the first reading of the Watershed Management Plan at the regular Town Council meeting on December 2nd, 2025. This is the first and final reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. What I'm gonna do is this, is I am gonna get, let Anne kind of explain a little bit about this. There's been a lot of work on this. It's 70-plus pages long, and the committee has spent a ton of time putting this information together. You know, I, you know, Anne's got a lot of time and energy in this, and I think she's the best one to present the information.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, and I appreciate this because there are a number of people online and in the audience who are interested in this plan. And I just, in deference to them, I tried, I asked to have this moved to the front of this section. So the Resiliency Committee has been working on this for 15 months. The draft plan was presented to the Council in an hour-long workshop on September 2nd. We told the Council then that we would be back before with a final plan for acceptance, and I believe I mentioned it at the October meeting as well in my remarks. And I, neither I nor the Resiliency Committee Chair has received any outreach from any counselor or anybody in the community in the last 11 weeks. So there's been plenty of time to review it. And I just wanna point out that accepting this plan doesn't require us to take any action that we don't have the financial or staff capacity to do. However, accepting the Watershed Management Plan is foundational, it's absolutely critical to pursuing state, federal, and/or foundation resources to help cover the cost of addressing any of the listed priorities. I'll just note that in my professional life, I've written $180 million worth of successful federal grants to, in Maine and nationally, for nonprofit and local and state government clients. And it's, it's absolutely vital that we have a plan in place if we're gonna be seeking money for any component of this plan. And it, and I can point to the BikePed Plan, which the Council approved an updated version in 2018. You know, we're not constantly, you know, spending money on BikePed infrastructure, but when the opportunity arises and it, it makes sense to do it, then we have the resources to do it, then we try to take care of something that's in the BikePed Plan. And I just wanna note, too, that the request for this work came from the Lake Associations. In fact, they came before the Council several times in the last four to five years, pleading for this assistance, and we didn't have the resources to respond until we formed the Resiliency Committee, did the outreach work with the community, and applied for and received almost $50,000 under the State Community Action Grant Program. The contractor that we used is the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District. They're a very well-respected organization with whom the town has partnered successfully many times in the past. I would note that we, the Council's received about at least seven emails from Lake residents supporting the Watershed Management Plan. The Open Space Committee is one, or the Little Sevaco Lake Association, and support letters from the Royal River Conservation Trust and the Presumska Regional Land Trust. We also collected signatures from just 69 voters in a, in a five-hour, five- to six-hour period at the polls, and who, who indicated their support for the water quality management plan. I don't wanna put Joe in the spot, but Joe Murray has said to me in the past, and I think he said that in other meetings, that what's good for the surface water is also good for the groundwater, and roughly 90% of Gray residents and businesses rely on wells for water, the remainder are Gray Water District customers. According to our assessor, Lauren Asselin, we currently have 896 accounts categorized as residential shorefront. The assessed value is over 500, almost $565 million. That's approximately 25% of the town's assessed value. If these lakes become sort of toxic, you know, waste, cyanobacteria, you know, dumps, they, they, it's really gonna harm that assessed value. And there's a huge, so I just wanna point out, there's a huge financial risk to Gray's tax base of not protecting the water quality. I, I shared with the Council earlier this fall, an incident that involved, or sort of a, more than just one incident, but Lake Kennesawka in New Hampshire, which experienced a significant cyanobacteria bloom in 2020. This overtook the lake relatively quickly, within a two- or three-year period. And, and to quote the article, I mean, the lake had crossed its tipping point. According to water quality experts, with nutrients from fertilizer, stormwater runoff, and increased levels of phosphorus fueling the cyanobacteria growth, by 2023, aerial photos showed the cyanobacteria blooms in Lake, in the lake were flowing downstream and into Lake Winnipesaukee, threatening the state's largest lake and a huge economic region, engine for the region. The point is that we can't pinpoint precisely where that tipping point is. We don't know until we reach it. So it, it just makes sense to try to prevent those things from happening to begin with, because nobody wants, you know, green slime in their bathing suit, or, you know, their pets dying, or their children getting sick from toxic, you know, algae blooms. And they can cause skin rashes, respiratory and gastrointestinal diseases. distress, and occasionally even death when they're really bad. And in the case of this lake in New Hampshire, the last resort was to put into the lake these aluminum compounds that could end up killing fish and other aquatic life. And they weren't even sure if it would fix the problem. It cost them, so far, over $770,000, so more than 3/4 of a million dollars, just to deal with this one lake. And it's projected to last no longer than 13 years. So it's far cheaper to accept and begin working on aspects of this plan than it is to undertake expensive remediation after the tipping point has been reached. And I'd just point out that, interestingly, in that particular case, the community had to go ahead and do all the things that we're proposing to do under this watershed management plan in order to get money from the state to do that aluminum treatment. So we're doing the right thing. That's my point. And, you know, the watershed management plan points this out. All four of Gray's lakes are listed as vulnerable by the Maine DEP, and each for several reasons, but all of them, it includes phosphorus loading. These pressures are only going to intensify due to climate change. As we've seen in recent years, winters are shorter. When I first moved to Gray, it was routine for there to be an ice fishing derby on Crystal Lake, where there were like a dozen or a couple dozen trucks parked right in the cove off of Wilkie's Beach, and lots of snowmobiles running over it. Those kind of ice fishing tournaments, if they happen at all, you don't see those trucks in the lake anymore. And so the winters are shorter. It gives a shorter time for the lake to rest. And it's really, that allows more time for the harmful bacteria to grow. And we also have more and more development pressures around the lakes. You know, we see seasonal, you've seen it all. I mean, the seasonal camps are being converted to year-round houses. There's more development happening kind of up slope from the shorefront, the waterfront. And every time their soil is disturbed, whether it's through removal of trees, or planting lawns, or whatever that might be, you know, creating more access roads, that it provides more opportunities for erosion to get washed, you know, for soil to be washed in the lake, and that carries phosphorus. So, you know, I just want to, I'm close by reiterating that accepting that this watershed management plan doesn't commit Gray to spending, you know, a fortune in this kind of, you know, further analysis and studies that are needed that the water, the plan actually, you know, points to and prioritizes. But it is foundational and critical to pursuing state, federal, or foundation resources to help with addressing the listed priorities. And we can do so, by the way, not just on, you know, by Gray alone, but in partnership with surrounding towns that also share the lakes with us, and the, you know, various regional trusted partners like Cumberland County Soil and Water, or the Conservation Land Trust, Casco Bay. I mean, the watersheds in Gray drain into Casco Bay. If you like your summer lobster, you want to be concerned about the quality of the water that's going into Casco Bay. So that's, I'll end there. I know that was a long piece, but I think it was really important to provide that background and overview of how we kind of got to this place and what we're planning, you know, what we're asking the council to do at this point.
Anne, do you have any?
Yeah, I do have some questions. So I thought we were going to have a workshop on this, because I have a lot of questions, so.
We did have a workshop.
No, we had a workshop scheduled at 5:30 for this. Early, we got canceled.
Right. It was canceled because we had the workshop back in September, when Cumberland County Soil and Water came and made the presentation.
Okay. So my question is, is I looked high and low for your 20-step plan, and in your 20-step plan, isn't it 1,000-foot setbacks that you guys want to implement on the lake?
That's a separate issue. That's the surface water protection ordinance, which the council has not had a chance to learn about yet.
Okay, so that's not part of this?
It may be one of the recommendations, but again, it's a recommendation that ultimately that the council can decide to delay on, or approve, or not approve. But it's not, you know, approving this or accepting this plan does not require us to adopt that.
Okay, well, three of the lakes that are in this town, share with the town. So you live on Notchit Pond. Notchit Pond is half Gray, half Raymond. Is Raymond going to participate in this watershed management plan?
But, I mean, they can if they want to. And we would pursue working with them on any of the listed priorities. There's no requirement that they do so. We can't require
And they can do 1,000-foot setbacks, and 500 rivers, and 250 to stream?
I mean, I don't know what, I can't comment on their laws, or, you know, or their ordinances.
Okay, well, Forest Lake is Cumberland, Wyndham, and Gray. Is Cumberland and Wyndham participating in that?
Cumberland and Wyndham already have, Wyndham actually has a far more restrictive ordinance than we do, and we use it as a model for Little Sebago Lake. I mean, for our surface water protection ordinance, for their portion of water.
Well, I really don't have any problems. I mean, obviously, everybody wants clean lakes. I grew up on Middle Rain Pond my whole life, in Little Sebago. But 1,000-foot setbacks is a problem for me. The state only regulates 250 feet. So that's a problem that we need to take up on how that's going to lay out and plan out for the residents of the town of Gray.
Fair enough. I mean, I think the council, our intent is to come to the council with the surface water protection ordinance on December 2. So the council will have an opportunity to review that. And we have, we've had two meetings with the ordinance advisory committee already, and made, I think, a lot of progress on, you know, incorporating their comments and edits into the ordinance. But that's not what we're speaking about tonight. I just want to be clear.
Okay, so you're speaking about the phosphorus load in the lakes. That's what you're concerned?
We're talking about the watershed management plan that is part of the council packet tonight.
Well, I printed it off. That's how I get the thing.
Yeah.
And then these things, it has scorecards from DEP, and all the lakes are way below average on phosphorus.
I think that's not what the summary says. I mean, that they're considered vulnerable because of, among other things, phosphorus loading.
Well, I have them right here. Slightly below average, below average.
Which page is that?
Oh, page 46, Little Sebago Lake. Barely stable. I mean, I just think that this needs more time to be looked at. And I mean, like I said, I have no problem with playing water, and I don't want to see any algae blooms in any of the lakes. But I just think it needs to be reviewed a little longer. What do you think, the council board?
I'm going to agree with you. I know, and thank you for getting back to me with the email. And I just, I was originally under the impression that, even though we had talked about it once, and those people had come, obviously, with everything we've had going on with regards to the town budgets and everything else, it kind of got set to the side a little bit. And I was really looking forward to having another workshop on this tonight. Overall, I think it's great. I mean, people clearly put a lot of time into it. And I guess the bottom line for me is, they put a lot of time into it, and I feel that it would only be right for me to put a lot of time into it to go and review things. But what I see, I really like, I just have some additional questions. I mean, the bottom line is, I think education is critical. I mean, I look at a lake, like Highland Lake, which looks like it, good stewardship has set it back to maybe the year 2000, from what I'm looking at, it's a graph right here. Good stewardship of the lake. I mean, you look at big contributors, you talk about excavation, forestry, and agriculture. They already have rules and regulations in place with the Department of, you know, Agriculture, and DEP, and EPA, et cetera. So education about having people put, you know, I've got this little booklet. When you walk out of here, it talks about a bunch of things you can do. And I'd probably guess that 95% of the people on the lake haven't done all of those. And so, you know, I think we all need to be good stewardships of the water. But ultimately, I'm leaning strongly in favor of this. I wish we would have had a workshop tonight, because I think if we had, I could probably answer those final questions and move forward. But hopefully, we can do that soon. And, you know, that's kind of where I am right now. I'd like to just have a little bit more clarification on some things, and hopefully, we can move forward.
And all I'm going to say is that I, and I told you, I have not had enough time to do all the research that I need to do. You guys have done a ton of work. I live on the lake. I think it's important. But I can't vote on it today. I just, you know, if you want me to vote on it, I'm going to vote no. I prefer to table it, and do some more research, and come back with some questions. But, you know, it's up to you guys if you guys want to vote on it tonight. I think it's, all the work that's been put in, I would hate to vote this down tonight. But I'm not ready to vote for it, is where I'm at.
A couple of just points of information. One is that we had requested that this be on the council agenda. We've been telling everybody that's going to be on the council agenda for about this evening. And so the decision to put it into a workshop was made without consultation from me or the council, or the committee chair. So I had no knowledge of it until somebody flagged it for me. So I'm sorry for that. It was misinformation. But if you don't come to the people who are, you know, like key point people for it, and let them know that, then it's, you know, it's pretty hard to have that conversation. And I'll also note that you've had 11 weeks. You know, I'm not sure how much more time you need. And there hasn't been any outreach from any of you since September 2. And I, so I'm concerned about, you know, holding this up longer. We have some obligations under the grant to get this done, you know, and we do have some more time available to us. So it's not like this is a do-or-die moment tonight. But I'm just really, I think it's, you know, not fully respectful, honestly, of the work that the committee has put in and the consultant. And, you know, we've been trying to, it's hard to move these kinds of things along, and it would be great to not hold this up too long. I do see, Mike, that Sandy Carter has her hand up online.
Yep. First, did everyone else get their questions?
I just want to know, I think the work you've done is great, and we're not trying to put that down or anything like that. Like I said, it's just, it's a lot of information to take in. And with everything else going on, we just haven't had time to research at all. That's all.
And I think the reality is, you know, we saw the workshop, so you can't put blame on us for seeing a workshop on there, thinking that we were going to have that information.
Yeah.
So I guess the bottom line is, I think, you know, I like to support this. I'm just looking for some clarification. So, you know, you said you've been working on it for years. We're close to the finish line. If you could just give us that time, we could go forward. I just don't, I'd rather not vote it down. I'd rather table it if we could. But that's...
Let's open it up to these guys online, and then, Charity, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Sentiments very similar, you know. Would love to see this move forward, but I've got a couple of questions as well, and was really much looking forward to having that workshop this evening. So if we could table it until December and get a workshop for December, and then vote on it then, that would be great.
All right, thank you. Sandy?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'm not going to diminish the fact that we're disappointed. We have been working on it for a tremendous amount of time, along with a great group of volunteers, the lake associations, and our partners in the land trusts, and Cumberland County Soil and Water. Having said that, I mean, obviously, we would prefer it to pass. I mean, that's, or to be accepted. And I want to make that two points of clarification. This is a plan. It's a roadmap, and it's there to help. It's there to help the council and town staff. Having been on the council previously, I understand how many priorities come flying at you, and how much pressure there is on the limited taxpayer funding that is available to get everything done. This is critical work. I think we've demonstrated that. Everybody can see that from the examples of towns or lakes that haven't done anything or haven't done the planning. And once you get to that tipping point, it is very difficult to get back. And so it is very critical. It is just a roadmap. And so accepting the plan gives you more information as you move forward, and you have organizations, or situations, or infrastructure projects that come before you. It will help you identify ways to spend limited funds more efficiently. And then it also opens up a vast amount of additional funding avenues, as Anne stated earlier. The other point I want to make is, the ordinance is separate. And I know that's super confusing, because phosphorus is repeatedly brought up, because it is one of the biggest impacts to water quality. And you can look at the scorecards, but looking at the health of a lake is a multitude of points. So there's pressure points, and the consolidation of those pressure points is what impacts the overall health of an individual lake. So it is rather confusing. The ordinance is obviously a recommendation. It's something we've been working on, because it is something that doesn't require funding. And so we will bring that to you separately. So there will be a lot of time to have a discussion on that specific item. But the watershed management plan is the overall plan. It would be very beneficial if it is tabled tonight. Obviously, if it's not going to pass, then tabling it is the preference. If we are going to table it to the December 2 workshop, then I would respectfully ask that all of the counselors individually submit their questions. And that can be done through Anne, so that it can be brought to the resiliency committee, so that we can prepare answers for you, and make sure that that workshop is fully productive, and that we can leave that workshop with everyone feeling confident or comfortable with the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Do you know who the next one is? Yeah. DB? Can we, DB, would you like to speak?
Dennis Brown, yeah.
Dennis? Yep.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Okay. I'm Dennis Brown. I'm not a resident of Gray. I'm chair of the Natural Resource Advisory Committee in Wyndham, and also president of the Highland Lake Association. And Highland Lake was raised in the conversation tonight. And I wanted to just share with you that Highland is the best protected lake in the state from an ordinance standpoint. And the ordinance works hand-in-hand with education. We've done a great deal of work between the towns of Wyndham and Falmouth to help educate the public. So it's really important that you have both education and ordinance work together, so that the town can communicate exactly what it is that you're trying to do. On Highland, the entire watershed comes under the ordinance, and we are very rare in that we've been able to, as was mentioned earlier, been able to reduce the amount of phosphorus in Highland Lake. And water clarity has improved along with it. They go hand-in-hand. But it is a combination of ordinance and the education. But the watershed management plan that we put in place is not unlike the one that Cumberland County put in for you. In fact, they were involved with ours as well. But what it does, it gives you a roadmap. It gives you, it helps you sort out the priorities of what are the things that are going to make the biggest difference for the least amount of cost as you go forward. And ours is a 10-year plan, and we've been on it for a while, and we revise it about every three years. Nothing on it is mandated. It's just a guidepost for us. So I, after having seen what we were able to do on Highland Lake, as chair of the Natural Resource Advisory Committee, I encouraged that, and was successful in getting the Wyndham Town Council to bring in most of those same ordinances to the other lakes in town. But obviously, like Highland Lake is shared between Wyndham and Falmouth, Little Sebago and Forest Lake are shared between Wyndham and, well, Cumberland in the case of Forest Lake. And so it's really important, from my perspective, that you need to have, and a good point was raised, is Notchit Pond going to do it from both sides of the lake. And that's where I'm coming from, is Wyndham is trying to do it, but they can't do it alone. They really, we share these watersheds with you.
Thank you. We better cut you off. I appreciate you speaking.
Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome.
All right. So next, AB.
Yep. Hi, council.
Hi, council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Andy Barheit, Nuts and Road in Gray. I am also a member of the resiliency committee. And I just would like to echo what Sandy and Ann both shared. A lot of work has gone into this and we were prepared for this today. And while we're disappointed it won't be voted on, we welcome the committee's next action with a workshop in, on December 2nd. I would just encourage you to keep the ordinance separate from this plan. It is related, but not the same. They are intended to go hand in hand, but the plan, as everyone has said, is intended to provide the roadmap. This is an important distinction, but easy to miss. So I'd just like to reiterate that. And I would like to thank everybody for their time tonight and I look forward to seeing you all at the workshop on the 2nd.
Thank you, Andy. Do we want to, are we looking to table this?
Yes.
Sounds like that's what we need, governor.
You know, I think, you know, but we don't, can we?
I think we need a workshop.
Okay, all right. So do I have a motion to, is there anybody that wants to step up? I think that we're going to table it, but I would like to...
This is actually why I'm here. Derek Shirley, I'm also the chair of the Ordinance Advisory Committee, also a zoning board of appeal member in town, also a lands or trail steward for the Thatcher Book Preserve. I'm no genius when it comes to the screen stuff, not, not, not a genius, but one thing I am is a visual person. And I was lucky enough to go on a boat trip to Little Sebago Lake. And one thing that really stuck out to me was the different delta sizes in Little Sebago Lake. Even tonight, I heard there was possible, you know, talk of building off of Egypt Road and it kind of triggered my brain a little bit. For me, when I first listened to this ordinance, you know, I thought it was kind of full of kind of the same questions you guys had. I had a lot of unanswered questions, but this is about the guidelines or the, to be clear. I personally would support this as is, just for the simple fact that, you know, it is just guidelines. It's not like, it's not, there's not even any enforcement measures on it. So it's like, I mean, I also, on October 27th, I took a trip over to the water district board and I chatted up with the water district to get their two cents because, you know, I don't know anything about it, so I didn't want to take just their side or their side. So I went to someone that just cares about water. And, you know, the questions I asked them, they're kind of like, you know, I think you should support this. I mean, our water is like our top priority in our town. And, and so, you know, for me, it's like, as someone that has known absolutely nothing about this, nor am I an expert. I came to force myself to learn. And, you know, are there parts that I'm concerned about? Absolutely. One of the biggest things that stick out in my head is, you know, we talk about the lakes, lakes, lakes. I'm worried about what the heck is an actual feeder stream? Like where is the, I need a list of feeder stream. I know there's a definition of feeder stream. I, I underget that, but I need a list of actual feeder streams. That's just like one concern I have with it. But other than that, man, I think the, you know, I think sometimes we hear these green ideologies and think there's some, some attack on our personal rights. And I, I sometimes drink that Kool-Aid, I'm not going to lie to you. But, you know, these people come with true intentions to protect the water. I don't think it's a secret attack to take away our rights over 1,000 feet. I don't think it's that at all. I think, you know, if, if Gray, you know, think about, I drink up from the well water. I know how many, I sit in the traffic at the lake. You know, I go to the Crystal Lake with my son every summer. So, you know, I, I do care about the lake. But for me, it's one of those things where it's like, what's the intention, right? What's the intention? Are they really coming after you to say, tell you, you can't build? And, you know, nitty-gritty, I didn't feel that. I feel like truly just care about the water and that's all.
Thanks. Just a point of clarification. I think because Derek is on the ordinance advisory committee and has been really involved in that process, he, we've been reviewing the surface water protection ordinance with them and that's separate, as Andy pointed out and Sandy did too. It's separate from this watershed management plan. It's really confusing, but those, I just want to make sure that we, we keep those...
That's why we need a workshop to get it all scripted.
I agree, Derek. Would anybody else like to come up and speak? Yep, please come right up.
Pam Wilkinson, Bertrand Road, Little Sebago Lake. I am disappointed, but I also want to make sure that you have all the answers that you need to have this, have this pass. Yeah, it's been a long time, but I think that the clarity between the 1,000 feet, which a lot of people have, that's, that's little buzz thing, buzzword. The watershed management plan basically has nothing to do with 1,000 feet. It has nothing to do with it, except for that on the very bottom, it says that we will review the surface water protection plan, which that's where the 1,000 feet is. So I, I welcome the workshop. I welcome the questions beforehand and I think once you get the picture, we'll be back and we'll get a yay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Would anybody else like to come up?
Sure. Wayne Wood, resident of the town. I also sit on the ordinance review committee. I was eagerly anticipating a workshop when I got up this morning until I looked at the website later in the day and found out that it was canceled or not there anymore. Because I, like several counselors have said, I have been extremely busy, as I always am, trying to get to through stuff. And I'll be the first to admit, I'm usually at the last minute trying to review stuff to, to determine the ins and outs of it and what should and shouldn't be done, in my opinion. So I have been tardy from Ann's September meeting that was a workshop that I couldn't attend. I'd like the opportunity to be able to attend one and, and share some of my comments as well. So I would appreciate that and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Once everybody else comes up, absolutely. Thank you.
I live on Mayberry Road on Crystal Lake and I'm a member of the Crystal Lake, Lake Owners I am disappointed that you're not voting on this tonight, but I kind of saw it coming when I saw that the workshop had been canceled, which was unfortunate. I had the good fortune of having been part of a presentation of this plan to the Lake Owners Association of Crystal Lake back in June. So we kind of know what's going on in it and there's very strong support for this in the Crystal Lake community, as I imagine you're aware. One thing that I don't see mentioned anywhere, and I do think it should be at the very least for the Crystal Lake description, is that this is our recreation area for the town. And there are hundreds of people who use that beach every year, hundreds who belong to the Wilkie Beach, Wilkie's Beach group on Facebook, which I manage. And I think it's really important that we keep that in mind as a part of this because it's, you know, it's been mentioned by others, but it's really important to protect that beach, which closes down almost every year due to lake contamination. The, the second thing that I don't see mentioned in this, and I understand why it's not mentioned, but I, I think that it's important ultimately to deal with, is that I see no mention of a mooring ordinance, which, you know, is something that they've done in other towns to surround us. But in fact, if somebody was to put down a mooring and simply put their boat there for the summer, it would not only be an annoyance for the people who live on the lake, but it would increase the pollution substantially. And I think that we need to keep in mind that this board needs to be considering a mooring ordinance shortly after they decide to do this. Okay? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that now, Craig. I don't think you can do a mooring ordinance. I think that's a state law. Anything from the low water mark on the lake is pretty much, anybody can put a mooring in. But it's something I'll check into at the state.
Actually, Wyndham has a mooring ordinance. I believe Cumberland has one.
All right, I'll check into it.
We'll look into that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
And we have one that has been proposed here, which the board has so far not considered.
Look at me.
Thank you.
Did you have a question?
No, actually, I have just a point of clarification about, and I, and apologies for the confusion around the workshop. I mean, again, the committee was not, and I were not informed of the decision to create a, put it back into a workshop form. And we had sent out to every voting household in Gray a postcard telling them that it would be on the, on the agenda tonight at 7:00 PM. So we really felt like it was important to go ahead and do that, understanding that there was some interest on the part of some council members to, to have, you know, to workshop it some more. So I really, I appreciate my fellow council members' interest and, and support for this and, and look forward to discussing it in December.
And to back up what Ann said, it was a busy week. We were trying to get some things done and we apologize for the confusion. That's why we did move it, but I think, if it's okay, can we move this so that we can table it? Because I think that's what we need to do.
Pam, if you have one more comment, I mean, I just wanted to let her, she...
Oh, sorry, yes, absolutely. I didn't, no, no, no. I'm glad you said something, sorry.
She was up there going, that's all right.
Little Sebago Lake did bring a mooring ordinance before, I think, about four years
ago. It was on the bottom of the list and I think it really needs to surface again, get educated. Town of Naples has their own mooring ordinance, so we brought some of that information in and I think it just needs to be put as a discussion item.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, Derek, we, I had the opportunity to go to all the feeder streams that feed Little Sebago Lake with the DEP land people and to determine whether or not, and Crystal Lake, Cheryl was there with me. So to determine whether or not that stream met, met the criteria for their protection. And so I just had that, just, and I will share that that information will be forthcoming with the ordinance.
Thank you, Pam.
Yep.
My name is Joe Murray. I'm one of the trustees of the Gray Water District. And Derek, we appreciate you taking the initiative to come and ask for a little bit of input on this. I had, I had attended the earlier session when this was presented to the council at the workshop and the presenter made a number of good points, but the one that stuck most with me was how important it is to get out in front of this kind of contamination, potential contamination. It says, Ann pointed out, is never, ever cheaper to do a cleanup than it is to protect the water in the first place. At Gray Water, we do not draw from any surface sources, so this doesn't affect us directly. But in, just speaking in general, what's good for the surface water is good for the underground water also. These are both precious resources for this town, economic resources, and they deserve all the protection they can get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any ones, can we move to, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, I don't want to say this, we table this? And we, where is it? I'd like to make a motion that we table resolve 2526-10.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Clarification? I think we need to, if we table it, we have to, we have to...
No, we don't.
We have to designate when we're going to revisit it?
No, no. I've been looking at the way back. No.
Thanks.
Charity, I'm going to go to you for a vote. Yes to table?
Yes to table.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes as well. And I didn't mean to say that you had to vote yes, I meant, yeah, sorry. I know, that was presumptive and I'll call it out on it. All right, so next is, are we, okay, so this is, so resolve 2526-15 is the management of the social media accounts. The motion be resolved that the Gray Town Council hereby disables the ability for users to comment on the town's social media posts as prescribed in the Town Gray Social Media Policy, Section V5. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
What I want to say is this, the, there was some discussion at our retreat. We looked into it. The attorney not only called us and said that we can turn it off, they strongly suggested that we turn it off. And, you know, so I think it behooves us to turn, to turn it off. I don't see any positive things for this right now. And again, it is the advice of the attorney to turn it off. So I'll open up for questions, Ann?
I, honestly, I, I guess I'm looking at a different agenda, but I don't see this on this.
Okay, so we're going back to the resolves.
It's 9A on yours.
9, oh, okay. 9A, all righty. I just, because I, okay.
I know, it's messed up.
Because I thought that was the social media one.
Earlier I said we're going to get to those.
Okay.
This is why.
All right, got it. I don't, I mean, I, I do think that we need to turn off the, the comments, the ones that I've, I mean, there have been some good ones and actually I have seen some good discussions, so I'm a little ambivalent about this. But it just seems like we're, we're kind of circling the drain here in terms of the quality of the, of the discourse. And, and I mean, I would, once we have the new social media policy in place and, and our, you know, have sort of worked out the bugs in that, I would be open to revisiting this decision if we, you know, if, if there's sufficient interest and, and we think that it would be helpful to the community. But I just, I just don't like the attacks on, on especially the staff, but on, on each other, on, and I really think something needs to happen.
And I want to be very clear, this is only about our site. When we put up something to the Town of Gray, that's what we're talking about. So we're going to put up, we're going to say, hey, we had a great event at the Blueberry Festival, these are all the details, and we're not going to open up to comments. What you cannot do is take out comments when somebody makes them, so you can't pick and choose which comments you have. You could if there was a, but I don't want to get into it. So it's much better just to not have them at all. And that's the advice, so I just want to explain that.
I'm also...
Let's see, how many questions? Charity, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions on that.
Okay, can I just go to unanimous consent? All right, pass. All right, resolve 2526, oh, I am so sorry. Because I didn't do it, I'll give somebody a chance to speak, even though we voted on it. Would you like to get up to the podium and talk about the, that's my fault, I'm just...
Yeah, we're all...
I'm trying to get through some stuff, yep, sorry.
We're all together.
Earlier, somebody mentioned having a half a million followers or something online. But I actually have an experience of operating probably the first social media site to have 300,000 users. And that was back in the 1980s. And actually wrote a book about it, but that's a different issue. It is very easy to solve the problem of personal attacks on social media. You simply have to be willing to do it. You set a rule that says no personal attacks, any personal attacks... Any personal attacks will be deleted, and you delete them. Period. And I don't expect you to deal with that at this moment. But the fact is that we had almost zero personal attacks on my system when I was operating in the 1980s and 1990s. Zero. Just about.
I just want to make a point, Charity, just to let you know. I think, if I'm wrong, let me know, and we can give them more time, is that the rules for public, you can't take stuff on and off, right?
I mean, hypothetically, we could do that, but it might be...
Please.
Anyone with admin capabilities on Facebook?
No, I understand that. But I think, if we can let him speak, and I'll let you start over three minutes, because I just want to make a point of clarification on this. I just want to make sure we're doing this right.
So the fairest way would probably be just to turn it off completely. Hypothetically, yes, social media tools do allow a moderator to delete individual comments, but then you have to have someone making that judgment call every time. So it could get a little murky. So it might be just, it might behoove us to be...
Yeah. And my understanding from the council is that as a town, we're not supposed to be saying which ones, and then we could get in a lot of trouble if we didn't like that comment, right? So, you know, we have the ability to do it, but the best policy is not to have it. And, you know, I think it's more of a protection for our employees at this point. But if you have more to say, please do. That's my fault. I just wanted to make sure we got the right answer.
Again, there's already been commented that there have been good comments as well as bad. And you throw the baby out with the bathwater when you prevent all comments. It's really that simple. And I encourage you to figure out a way to do that, whether that's a volunteer administrator or whatever that doesn't have any town role, you know, but does it, or some other system. It's best to simply have rules and enforce them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Lacey Antson, Lake Avenue. I also have some accounts that talk about the town. Gray Trail Network, Gray Building Festival, I don't think there's a third one. But I also follow some that are out there. So I think, I think the town account should allow comments without, with that phrase added about nothing nasty, because I think it's a learning tool for the town council. When the most recent post was about a new brand for the town, and there were a lot of feedback, and it wasn't all like nasty, nasty swearing. It was just people saying, why do we need a new brand? And they were reiterating our comp plan. You know, we don't want to be someplace else. We want to keep small. So it weren't, they weren't nasty comments. But if you don't allow that, then people are going to say these things on Gray, New Gloucester Community Buildings Uncensored. And then they're going to say them there, and they might be even saying them nastier because it's uncensored. They might be swearing and stuff. And I don't, I don't want people to swear and slander people, but they're just saying how they feel about policy. And so by not allowing any comments, you're not allowing to hear people who can't make this meeting, who don't voice their opinion other ways. I think, I think there is value in letting comments be on there, especially when it's something that's going to affect everyone. You know, a new brand. Why are we spending 1,000,000 on a new brand? And they just gave their honest opinion. I don't think they were, well, some might. But just censor, you know, no swearing, no naughty words, nothing like that. You know, don't cut down a person. But when it affects the policy of the whole town, I think it should be allowed to have comments, because then you're getting the feedback of people to hear what they have to say honestly.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm trying to hustle.
You have to hustle for it.
It's late, and this isn't why I came to this meeting, but I'm here, so I can't help but speak. So Jess Palladino, I live on Crystal Lake. I feel a little bit in the dark about everything that's going on, about harassment and things like that. So just putting that aside, it does concern me, the town just shutting off all comments, because I think that, actually, as Davis said, you throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think sometimes the minority and the crudest voices stand out on social media. But I know for me, it's really difficult for me to get to one of these meetings. This is the first one. Actually, well, I went to the special workshop last month. But it's really tough for me to get here. And I know others that share that sentiment. It takes, it's a big lift just for me to send an email, which I'm embarrassed to say, but it's the truth with my to-do list. And I also worry that with an email, I've sent them before, and, you know, many of you replied today, but I've sent them before in the past to the past town council, and it was like, thank you, and never heard of again. So I worry that we're taking away public comment where we, as residents, can see what other people are saying other than in a formal setting like this. I guess if I could have input into what the policy would be, it would be setting really strict ground rules and so that there's really not a lot of gray area. Maybe it's that town council members can't be mentioned by name or, you know, policies need to be mentioned, things like that. I don't know what they are. But it does concern me that it's like a swift motion of shut all the comments off on social media. Also, thinking about the younger generation, we want to have voices of all ages giving you feedback on everything, right? So is a 23-year-old going to come here at 8:59 PM on Tuesday? I don't know. So I just want to share that perspective as well.
Thank you. And I do want to, that Kyle struggles with this as well. He is looking at alternatives. Is there a place where people can, you know, send in comments, post questions, things like that? But if you get into, I do not want to get into the business of saying what we can keep and what we can't keep. I can 10 times ask people to get up and be respectful. And it is what it is, right? And I think, right now, we need to protect our employees. There's been a lot of problems. And I'm more concerned with them at this point. Maybe in the future, we can, but we're going to, I know Kyle wants to find a solution, and we'll work with him and try to figure it out. Because I do think that there is a, the Christmas light, the things that everyone gets worked up about. We do want to get feedback. But I just, we need to be really careful right now. Thank you. All right, so moving on. So we, oh, let's see. So Appointment, Resolve 2526-16.
Do we need to vote on it?
We already voted on it, and then we let people get out. So we've already done that. We did it backwards. 25, no, no, I'm sorry. I've been trying, yeah, so we've got to still meet after this. So Resolve 2526-16, Appointment of the Transfer Station Ad-Hoc Committee Members. Motion be resolved that the Gray Town Council hereby appoints the individuals recommended by the selection committee to serve on the Transfer Ad-Hoc Committee. These appointments shall take effect immediately and remain in force until the committee's work is completed for further council action. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So I'm going to let, Ann and Ken have been working on this. Since, Ann, you kind of started the referral. Can you kind of give us your approach? And then Ken, and then the two of you, talk about how you came up with the list of who you think we should have.
Yeah, I'll start. Just as a reminder, my original referral to council suggested that, where I suggested forming this ad hoc committee in the wake of Randy Cookson's departure, suggested that we form this committee and use the following criteria for choosing the, any applicants that we had. And one, that they had, you know, we were looking for an applicant that, or applicants that had experience in recycling, in solid waste, in the solid waste industry, in traffic engineering because of the traffic pattern there, in municipal or large-scale composting, and then also that they be residents. And I'd say, you know, we were really fortunate. We had 12 applicants. And I just, I was so moved and excited by the, a level of interest in this topic and the qualifications of these applicants. So it was a great pool to choose from. We did end up, and so, do you want to talk about the process, Kenny? I don't want to monopolize this conversation.
No, that's fine. So Ann and I got together, and four of them popped right up at the top, and we pretty much both agreed on it at the beginning. And we went through everybody's applications. But as you said, the October 7 meeting, they set a standard of what they were more likely looking for. And the four that we picked filled that position more than the rest of them.
So do you want, should I list the...
Yeah, can you list, and then you comment? And then we'll get some questions from us, and then we'll...
So the top four that were chosen were Don Davidson, who's certified as a transfer station inspector. She has significant experience in waste management. Teagan Simkins, who has extensive experience with traffic engineering. Barney Boynton, who has four-plus years working with the Institute of Scrap Recycling Industries as a safety consultant. And Arianna Porter, who's an environmental consultant and project engineer with experience in cop, large-scale composting. So all are residents. I would say also that, with the exception of, I know Barney Boynton slightly is related to some bike ped work I was doing over a dozen years ago. I don't know any of these applicants. And so, and I think that's true of you.
I didn't know any of them either. So I would like to thank everybody who applied. 12 people, it shows the passion that everybody has for the transfer station. And we thank you for applying, and we wish we'd have more, but that's all we can do.
All right, Charity, do you have some, any questions on this?
I don't have any questions on that. I think, Ken and Ann, thank you very much for putting all the work into going through that list, and I'm happy with the picks.
I would like to bring up one more thing. Seeing that Charity's in Florida, I'd like to make a motion that we, council plangy on, as liaison. Charity's not going to be around to do this.
Okay.
You would have to amend the motion.
So, yeah, Brett, how do we do that if we're going to change from Charity to Vince?
Change the...
Council liaison.
Council liaison.
I don't know how we next address that.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Well, let's vote on this, approve it, and then do that? Okay, all right, perfect. I'll just make my comment real quick. You know, these two stepped up, offered to look at all the stuff. I trust their decision. I know one person, I know Barney as well. But I think you guys are looking to do the right thing for the town, and whoever you guys choose, I'm fine with.
Good.
All right.
Can I just make a point? I, again, thanks to all of the applicants for applying in the first place. If you were not chosen, please consider joining one of our town committees. There's lots of other opportunities I mentioned earlier. Resiliency and Open Space, I know for sure both have vacancies, and I imagine there, and Planning Board as well, probably others as well. So if you have any questions about any of those, call any one of us, and we can get you more information.
All right, I want to open up for public comments. Any questions? All right, can we go to a vote? Actually, can we just unanimous consent? Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Charity?
I'm fine with that.
All right, cool. All right, thank you. All right, so then the next one is, we, okay, we got rid of... All right, so the Planning Board. Resolve 2526-18, Appointing Charlie Mitchell to the Planning Board. Motion be resolved that Gray Town Council hereby appoints Charlie Mitchell as a regular member of the Planning Board to fill an unexpired term expiring August 31, 2027. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All right. So did you have an opportunity to?
I didn't. He did not know him, but he, I looked at his application. He is a businessperson. He seems like he's got a good background. I think he had something to do with law degree, and I think he would be a good addition to the planning board, based on what I was reading.
All right, Charlie, I assume is not here. Okay, all right. I don't know him. I read it. I felt fine with it. I know this is one of the boards that we really have talked about being real careful with, right? We want to make sure people that are making the right decisions for this town. I wish I had an opportunity to talk to them. I have not. But, you know, does any, do you have any comments, Ken?
Go on, Melissa.
Do you have any? All right, does the public have any comments or thoughts on this? All right. I'm just going to go to a vote then. Charity?
I vote yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Vince?
Yes.
A yes as well. All right. So, and then, let's see here. The last one is Resolve 2526-19. The reaffirmation of solid waste salvage restriction. Motion be resolved that one, that the Gray Town Council hereby reaffirms that no person shall salvage, remove, or carry off any deposited solid waste prior, without prior approval of the solid waste director or their designee. The restriction remains in full force and effect to ensure proper waste management in compliance with applicable regulations as prescribed in Chapter 504, Solid Waste Flow Control and Recycling Ordinance, Section 4E. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I asked some questions about this, and really what this is, this is already in place, all right? It really doesn't make a difference if we vote it for or don't vote on it. But we're going to vote on it tonight just because there are event issues. There's safety issues. There's a lot of things that are going on. And we just want to let everybody know that we do have a policy in place, that it is important that we follow it, and, you know, that we back up whoever's in charge over there to make that decision, to protect our town, to protect the employees, and to protect the people that are, you know, possibly jumping in dumpsters as well. So, you know, I think it's important that we, that we back this and approve it. Are there any questions?
Yes, I do have a question.
Okay.
So are we just approving this ordinance here or all the ordinances that are under...
Just this.
Just this.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. And we're not, I mean, we're not really going to change anything.
Well, I'm just, no, that's a, that's a good thing.
Sure, absolutely. Charity, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Yeah?
I don't.
All right. Vince?
No.
Anybody in public? Please get up.
Hey, I'm Will Kinsen, Burke Road Road. Don't laugh. I really enjoy the transfer station, and I love seeing things. Transfer to me is not only transferring the trash of Gray to Ecomane or wherever it goes, but to me, transfer is also mitigating some of those costs by allowing people to take some stuff. And I know there's a liability issue. I know, I don't know if there's been any incidences of people getting hurt. But, and I know that, and I really appreciate the new lanes that are in there. But I think my thoughts are that there should be an extra lane to the left. There's too much of that stuff that you can't park on. And that's causing backlog. I do appreciate the fact that there was somebody there monitoring people that live in the Town of Gray. The guy actually said he turned away 30 people that day. Wow. So that's good. Yeah. But I really feel whether people, some people like to get wood out of there to burn for the winter, and then some people, I actually got a nice set of, for my wood stove, the shovel and the things that you, you know, the grates and all that good stuff, brand new. And in the White, what I call the White House is where they keep all the other stuff that people deposit.
And I just want to make a point of clarification, so it doesn't affect that, it's not talking about that at all, okay? So that, you know, that swap still stays. All it's saying is that if you want to grab some wood, just ask permission. That's all it's saying.
So that was my next.
That's all it is.
If we, can we just go and say?
Absolutely.
But if you've changed the metal pile, so it just goes down in the dumpster, so nobody can see what's there, and that's, that's, that's one of those things, but.
I need a comment on this.
Pardon?
I said I need a comment.
Well, if you've got a point of clarification, absolutely, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, so it says right here that once you drop it and it hits the ground, it's property of the Town of Gray.
Right.
Okay, so what was happening is, the reason they moved the metal pile, was people trying to load ride lawnmowers in the back of the trunk, they're trying to strap down air conditioners to the roof. Can't have that.
Yeah, okay, no. And I know it costs traffic.
People are trying to scale the woodpile 30 feet in the air to grab a piece of plywood. We can't have that.
I do, I totally understand.
Right.
But you can see where I'm coming from, some other people.
I understand where you're coming from, but it's also a traffic flow issue, because people stopping right in the middle of the dump, and they're getting on, they're moseying around for an hour, picking the metal pile, picking the woodpile.
I just got to say, if you don't know who he was, Popeye would roll over in his grave, right?
No, I know, but, yeah, things need to change.
But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, that there were some good things that are happening there.
Totally.
I really think you should push over that lane, one more lane, so that you allow the.
We'll address all that when the committee gets over.
Thank you, Pam.
Thanks, Pam.
Anybody else? All right, can I just, is this unanimous consent? Charity, is everyone? All the way?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Everyone's favorite?
All right, so I think now we're going to go to, all right, so we're going to open up one more time. Let me just pull this up, hold on one second. Hold, give me one minute. So we're going to open up one more time for public comments. I apologize to anybody that I interrupted earlier. I just want to be very careful that we follow our rules, that this is not, you know, a time to get up here and harass people, make comments, and let's just be really careful, let's be respectful of each other. We're trying to improve this town, okay? And if we just keep going to where we have been, it's not going to happen. And I apologize to Pam, and, you know, I just, I hope moving forward that when people come up, if they're going to make accusations, they have proof. And so I'm going to open up to public comments. Is there anybody that wants to say anything? Pam, please. Is there a friend? Give me a start, the clock.
Pam Wilkens, in Berthold Road. I want to say thank you, and I appreciate you welcoming comments. Tonight, there's been an abundance of comments, and you've been gracious on allowing people to talk one or two times, but it's, but it's refreshing. In the past, it was kind of squelched, but I really like this atmosphere that you do open up. It does take a little bit more time, but you're only meeting once a month, let's have two, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's what I was going to talk about, is the meetings of once a month. This was a little long, and it could have been longer, and, you know, I hope that when the year turns around, that you'll start considering at least twice a month, and that way, you know, the public is, you know, we all have to go to work the next day and stuff like that, you do too, and, you know, we want to be able to stay refreshed. And so I hope that you'll consider that. And just the last thing, I do have to make a clarification. Earlier on, because I did, when I gave testimony, I did make it clear, I had been, I want to make sure it's understood, that I was personally spoken to about the process that was taking place. So I wanted to make sure that's very clear, it came to me as I was in the supermarket, and I just want to clarify that testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, so there are no referrals, let's see, the current council referrals are the comprehensive plan rezoning, create water quality, shoreline ordinance, pop-up business ordinance, update village public safety ordinance, village transformation project, transfer station ad hoc committee. Meetings are the town council workshop December 2 at 7:00 p.m.
Well, that should be 5:30.
It should be 5:30, I was just going to say we need to fix that. Town council meeting December 2 at 7:00, town council meeting January 6 at 7:00, town council budget workshop February 3, town council meeting February 3. We are going to go into executive session, and under MRS A4056A, discuss personnel matters. We are adjourned, thank you.
Thanks.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Question?
Take a motion for adjournment.
All right, take a motion to executive session?
Sub move.
Second? All in favor? All right, thank you.